Hello.
Hello.
Michael?
Yeah. Where's my camera?
Oh, Apple is finally wearing torch. Apple's supposed to... It's supposed to be Apple.
He's firing me. Absolutely. Wouldn't bother me a bit.
Okay. He's gonna try and get on your phone. 'Cause on my phone, we're not gonna see people.
On your phone screen, you think?
Yeah.
All of them, too.
Michael can help you with that.
Carter. Also, is this...this is set to go till six thirty? Okay. All right. Just the...
Perfect.
Okay.
Kind of birthday party.
He's got a birthday party.
You need to try and buy somebody's house some light.
It's actually my daughter's. So, although I'd like to...
Thought it was raised...it's turning twenty-nine again. You wanna just begin then, and we'll... Okay. So, I really can't see the screen for, uh...to see who all's here, so I guess let's, uh, just run down the row real quick as to who's here. And, um...and then if you have questions as the presentation goes on, don't...don't talk over each other, but, um, I'll just need you to say your name then, ask your question. So, I'll go ahead and start off. Mayor Freeland, I'm here.
Uh, Ray Pacheco.
Ken Lee.
It's Kristen. I'm here. I'm still getting like a really bad clicking noise.
Yeah, me too.
We're working on it.
Yeah, this is where I'm hearing I'm getting that clicking noise, too. There, it went away.
It's gonna get water.
No. That's us. You want this? You can take it. Who else did we not have?
What's that?
You got it.
Is the clicking noise back?
No.
Yes, it is.
Flair, is it possible just to take this screen down so I can see everybody? It'd probably be easier for me to see who's here, and then we can move on or whoever needs to do.
Sure. Evan has control right now.
Yep.
I can tell you, we have Councilman Powell, Councilwoman Hake, uh, Councilman Hopkins, Councilwoman Vice Mayor Lutz, um, Councilman Huber are all on right now. I'm not seeing Councilman Johnson. Oh, see, Councilman Kathy's on.
All right. So, it looks like everybody but Councilman Johnson's here, then.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Evan. You can put that back up. Okay, and then as I said, if you have questions, just please don't walk over each other, but go ahead and just, uh, say your name, and then you can ask your question after that. So, I will then now turn it over to, uh, City Manager Napier.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. I appreciate being with you tonight. Um, it's my opportunity to present to you the fiscal year twenty-one budget. Um, the purpose of tonight's discussion is to walk you through a lot of the major concepts and assumptions that we made in designing and putting together this budget. Uh, without a doubt, um, you know, you...you may wanna ask questions, and you may wanna explore some of our assumptions further, and that would absolutely be in line with what I would hope we could accomplish this evening. Uh, we do anticipate that we will need a follow-up meeting to tonight's discussion, particularly in light of the possibility that we may have questions that we didn't answer completely or satisfactorily, um, and other homework assignments that you may just wanna give us to...to look into further and so forth. So, should that be the case, we do have Wednesday night set aside to be able to do just...just that. Um, a little earlier, we sent to you a, um, a budget memo, if you will, that goes through a lot of the detail with respect to sort of an expanded version of what I just described by way of putting together the budget. Um, I would invite you to read the footnotes because that, too, gives you some additional detail that didn't make sense to include in the body of the narrative. Um, tonight, that...that'll serve as a pretty good script for tonight's discussion in...in companionship with the presentation that you're looking at the first slide for right now. I, uh...I certainly hope that, um, uh, with regard to the data that you received, both in the memo, as well as with respect to the...to the presentation that we go over tonight, you should have a really good feel as to what the budget is designed around and built around and everything else. Um, however, at the end of the day, by the time we pass this in June, uh, on...in the, um, third week in June, it's my hope that the budget will reflect your will and your interests and...and your goals and so forth as we move into, uh, July one, which would be the official start, of course, for this...this budget. Uh, I certainly wanna take the opportunity to thank staff and, uh, you know, the number of hours that folks within the organization have dedicated to try to bring this to this point. Uh, indeed involves many more people than just myself, uh, including a number of employees who shipped in some feedback and did a lot of legwork to, uh...to put together estimates and concepts with respect to reducing budget expenses, which is a big part of tonight's discussion and a theme that you'll see throughout the, uh...the budget as you go through it. Um, we really are kicking off the budget deliberation process on a formal basis, although the council has done a lot of work to get to this point now. Just to give you a couple of examples, utility rates, actually, is a big part of this budget, and you decided that in a lot of ways, uh, before the new year even. Capital is a big part of this budget, and council's put a lot of work into that aspect of it, uh, as recently as, uh, even last week. We've had a lot of discussion with respect to, uh, funding our partners, and again, as recently as last week. So, a lot of the work that, uh, went into the development of the...of the book that you received over the weekend took place before tonight, and that...that, to me, is incredibly helpful because it gives us a lot of the answers to the quiz as we try to...try to put the budget together. But nonetheless, we still have a lot we need to talk about. Uh, you have in front of you a one-hundred-and-thirty-four-million-dollar budget, which is down considerably from last year. Um, I'm gonna say between fifteen and twenty million dollars difference over last year. Uh, a lot of what we talk about tonight, um, will be with respect to the general fund, particularly since we dealt a lot with the enterprises during the rate hearings and so forth. We...we may not need to rehash all of that. However, we will touch on that to...tonight as well to, uh...to remind you of some of the major influencers of the...the budget's design. Um, but yes, we'll dedicate a lot of time to the general fund, and, uh, unfortunately, the general fund, although it does service a lot of the operations of the city, it happens to be the most volatile aspect of our budget as well, in that it deals with, um, sales tax dollars. And as you'll see here in a second, sales tax dollars are a major portion of the revenue basket of goods that we try to predict going into the next fiscal year. Uh, before we dive into the general fund, however, if we could look at some of the overriding themes that meant...that, you know, sort of directed the budget's design, um, the, uh...uh, you'll see here in the slide, uh, that we're about to put up, a big driver of that was, of course, um, our concern for the maintaining of reserves throughout the next fiscal year. Right now, as you see, the budget in its present form, we anticipating a burn rate...we are anticipating a burn rate of just about eighteen percent a year, which would mean that for the dollars that have been set aside to sort of insulate the general fund, if you will, that will...will only last just over five and a half years, or right at five and a half years. Um, we hope to give you some ideas tonight that would reduce that much, uh, more and give you something hopefully that's, uh...that you can feel better about as we move into the new fiscal year. Um, while the budget does maintain a fairly conservative approach, I gotta tell you, my biggest concern is that we haven't been conservative enough. We talk about a sales tax discount of about twenty percent throughout your budget message, and that drags the entire revenue pool down by ten percent in and of it almost by itself. Um, the, uh, conservative nature that we view this budget through, again, may need, at the end of the year, a sales tax projection of, say, thirty percent discount, or worse, 'cause a lot of what we're dealing with right now are, you know, against the backdrop of conditions we're just not that familiar with. We've never really had to shut down the economy before, uh, in the manner that we've seen in the last few months, and we certainly don't know what that looks like from a sales tax receipt perspective. And so, my...my biggest caution that I would give you is, yes, we tried to be conservative, but the reality is, we may need to visit with this...on this budget again by the end of the calendar year, and...and beyond just the amendment process that we historically and typically do, uh, two or three times a year. Um, having said that, uh, we do feel strongly that, uh, observing the contract with the community as it relates to one-cent funding is...is still very important, and accordingly, we've tried to live within those means that one cent provides. Um, and, uh, in order to do that, we did present already an alternative view of capital that council, to this point, has, uh, been supportive of, and we certainly hope that support will continue in that it brings a lot of...of room to, um, deal with some of the issues that, uh...that a budget of this volatile nature assumes. Some of the major things that we're working against, um, that we probably ought to talk about as well, uh, is...is contained here. Um, moving into this budget process, we absolutely did not anticipate a mid-year second tier of health insurance increases. Uh, that came to us, uh, maybe two weeks ago, somewhere in that nature, and, again, was not something we anticipated, and it certainly put a lot of pressure on our operational expenses that we thought we had a better feel for. Um, accordingly, um, that has, uh, ironically made it more difficult to insulate employees with respect to, uh, keeping them whole throughout the next fiscal year, and so some of the things that we're gonna need to talk about in order to keep our reserve burn rate in a more moderate basis will be with regard to, uh, employee costs and so forth. Jumping into, uh, some of the major themes that helped us to organize the approach that we wanna take with respect to the general fund, uh, we...we really need to talk about sales taxes. Um, we, uh...we are proposing a sales tax rate that is lower than we have seen in a lot of years. Uh, right now, you are seeing what turned out to be a very good year in, uh, twenty-nineteen. Uh, when you drop fiscal year twenty on top of that, uh, that tells a little bit of a different story. We started out very strongly in fiscal year twenty, and, um, you know, didn't track too badly at all throughout the fiscal year until we came to the last quarter and...and rounding out the year, as you can see here. That red line represents what it is that we are dealing with right now, and we anticipate that red line to trend downward as we finish out the fiscal year. Uh, as you look at this from a budgetary perspective, uh, with this revenue stream, that's what the FY nineteen budget excuse...uh, came in at. The FY twenty budget, uh, would be represented by what we...do we have another line there? Oh, that is...excuse me. That green line is the FY twenty budget. I'm sorry. I'm getting my...my years mixed up. If we drop the fiscal year twenty-one proposed budget, you can see that we have really tried to put a lot of pressure, uh, in balancing a general fund prospectus around a revenue stream of this nature, as represented by the...the yellow dash line there. If we can accomplish our budget balancing around this, we think we'll be within reasonable parameters of where fiscal year twenty will end, and twenty-one could potentially begin. Um, moving forward, if we could, to give you a little feel for what this looks like, since the time that we had really good sales tax receipts, uh, you can see where we think fiscal year twenty will end up from a budgetary standpoint. By looking at that red solid line, you'll notice that, um, the general fund, uh, sales tax receipts as of May, albeit representing probably more closely akin to the March receipts, puts our trend line, our behavioral curve, uh, much further below the FY twenty budget than we anticipated, uh, a year ago. Moving forward into another way to look at this, we...we like to look at what happens in terms of generating the sales tax revenue by evaluating the major industry classes for this county. The...the green line at the top that kinda commands that upper portion of the, uh...of the grid here is our retail trade line, and in Natchorona County, that is kind of the king, if you will, of our major industry classes. We haven't yet seen what that will look like once we get, um, a full accounting for the...the shutdowns that have occurred in the last eight weeks. And so, this green line is deceptively, um, you know, positive. As you look at the...what we call the...what the state calls the mining trend line, however, you get a little more closely...a close, uh, reflection of what's been going on here in the last few months, even though with that one, too, we're still anticipating some additions to that blue line that will be far more negative than what you're seeing right now. But, uh, if you were to lay a trend line right on top of that blue line, you can see that that is undeniably a downward trajectory, which is, uh, not what we wanna see, and certainly what we hope will improve in the next eighteen months, because I...I do believe that...that retail by itself will not support or sustain our economy here in Natchorona County without that blue line, the mining sector. What they call the mining sector really should be more like the energy sector performing a lot better. Uh, moving on from this, I really like what this slide tells us here. I don't like the message. I...I like the...the...the data it shares. Um, the message is discouraging. If you look at the very first entry, kind of evaluating or slicing that mining data a little differently, uh, you can see how mining was doing, and again, it should really be considered the energy sector back in twenty-fourteen, which was kind of the peak for our county. Compared to what it's doing now, that is a pretty stark representation of, uh, how far mining has come down, how far energy has come down in our county. Uh, I suspect that as we start to get more checks and so forth, that are reflective of what's really going on here in the county, that red line, that red bar will shrink further, and the disparity between the good days, if you will, for our county and the energy sector, and where we're at now will...will just be more drastic, unfortunately. Retail, again, uh, doesn't appear to have slowed down a whole lot between those two ti...the two times being captured here, but again, as those, uh, checks come in and reflect the activity more closely, again, I...I think that that red bar is just gonna shrink in comparison to what we used to do, uh, some six or so years ago. Moving forward into another look at sales tax history, I was real curious to see what happened with sales taxes during the recession period that we went through back in sort of the oh-eight timeframe, if you will, and trending that obviously over time until now. You should notice right away that that greenish, uh, bar being represented for the current fiscal...well, excuse me, for the...for the fiscal year we're trying to plan for, fiscal year twenty-one, is in fact shorter than all the other bars on this graph. Uh, and in fact, you...you can probably tell that it is shorter by five-hundred thousand dollars from an annual standpoint than the last year that came as clo...is close to the year we're projecting, which would be, uh, twenty-seventeen. Um, it was surprising to me that actually the...the...the major recession that hit us back in sort of the oh-eight timeframe did not see, uh, the drops that we saw in seventeen, and we certainly believe that the sales tax receipts we're gonna see moving forward in the fiscal year is going to be less than both. Mr. Mayor, are there any questions before I proceed further from here?
Now, does anybody have any questions? And you can put your cameras back on, 'cause I do now have a computer that I can see, so if you have questions, you can, um, just wave at me and I'll let...I'll call on you. Councilman Kathy.
Uh, yes. The one thing that I wanted to mention, though, with the graph that, uh, uh, Mr. Napier has showing there is that drop from eight to ten, that was that big housing bubble and all of that. Uh, the thing that we need to remember is that drop you see from fifteen to seventeen was basically an oil and gas-related drop in revenue. So, that is kind of what I have been trying to explain and expecting to happen coming up here in the future, and I think, uh, Mr. Manager very definitely made the comment that, uh, along with that, our retail sales are going to drop as well, which I think was a very astute comment because of the unemployment we have in the oil and gas sector. So, I think he is working very well at that. My concern is, we are still overestimating our revenue as we go forward.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kathy, I think you and I share the same concern. Um, I'm really nervous that the, uh...the discount, if you will, that we're anticipating for sales tax receipts, particularly over last year, and...and even with regard to the other troubled times we've had in recent history, uh, won't be enough, 'cause indeed the conditions that we're dealing with right now are, in...in my estimation, much more aggressive and profound than what we experienced even in seventeen, and certainly, uh, in comparison to the twenty-oh-eight, twenty-ten timeframe.
Uh, Councilman Pacheco.
Carter, I know that we...we can't tell, obviously, the future, but if we had to look at the next six months, and...and I know we...we're trying to get an idea of everything, you know, kinda seeing things where it happened up at the college, there's some critical things, you know, getting some messages of how things are gonna be up there even, so I know it trickles into organizations like us. If you had to guess, and I know Tom, too, the next six months, are we looking at critical stages, or are we looking at even further drops in...in our tax revenue that...that downward trend, obviously? So, we're anticipating even more of a downward trend further, um, in that sales tax revenue? I know that may be a stupid question, but I guess I'm just trying to get my...a handle on. I mean, it's...it's gonna be heading towards even more so.
If we could back up a couple slides to look at the sort of the trend in sales tax a little more, um, that...that's great. We...we are hopeful that with regard to where you see that yellow dash line sort of hovering, uh, there in the, uh...beneath the, uh...the actuals for twenty and nineteen, that we don't see that yellow line drop further south along this matrix, uh, along this grid. Um, I...I am very, very I, I am very, very hopeful that, uh, you know, with sales taxes being the biggest component of our general fund and again, the most variable of revenue sources that we deal with, which is a real unfortunate, um, dichotomy to have to plan for, that, um, we can hover around this yellow dash line in terms of the actual receipts that come in. I do anticipate that red line probably finishing out below the yellow line, if you will, to wrap up the, the fiscal year, even though those are two different fiscal years, but just to give you a frame of reference, um, the, 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 the question that we will need to work together on is how long that sustained downward push continues? And it, and I would certainly say that if we can't see some level of that num- that, that line sort of pushing upward in any, in any degree, uh, we are going to have to come back and talk about additional measures that we need to take to make that expense line follow the same trajectory more closely, which would mean that for, if I can switch back to that other slide we were just on, that for this one here, that green bar would, would inevitably shrink. And if we were to, to map expenses the same way, we'd need to come at least somewhat closer to, uh, to what this graph would look like from an expense standpoint as well.
Councilman Huber, did you have a question?
Not so much of a question as a comment. I really appreciate all the hard work that I know that Carter and the staff have put in on this. Also, I really kind of want to echo what Councilman Kathy has said about his concerns about, uh, uh, basically that I, I think that these, uh, revenue projections, uh, uh, downward and negative that they are, I'm really afraid that, uh, we're going to experience something much worse than, uh, than what you're projecting here. And I think that, uh, as we go forward in this budget process, we really need to, uh, think, okay, you know, we can, uh, kind of adopt something like the budget that's being proposed here, but we're going to need to be, in my opinion, looking at even more drastic cuts and a lot of other things, uh, you know, more imaginative, uh, uh, ways of saving money. Because I'm re- I, I really, I, I don't like being a prophet of doom and gloom, but right now I just do not have a positive feeling about, uh, uh, where we're going to be going with any of our revenue, uh, uh, streams. And I think we just need to keep that in mind and I wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments at this point?
Okay. All right, moving on then, um, we get into the nuts and bolts of the general fund based on some of these themes that we've already talked about here. We do have a glimmer of good news, um, here, a couple of things. If you'll notice, the projected cash balance for the end of the fiscal year will be right at $16.9 million for the general fund. This does include the amount of money necessary to maintain the 120 days that council has set aside as sort of a policy benchmark for the corpus of the general fund's reserves. But you'll also notice that that number changes with the declining, uh, expense agenda that you'll learn more about here in a minute. The requirement for the reserves in the general fund also drops. And so that's where you see this $15.5 million come into play. That difference is about $600,000 and, uh, it actually contributes to the bottom line number for the, uh, uh, cash balance that we start with for the fiscal year in the neighborhood of $1.1 million. Now, the reason we have 1.1 versus say 600,000, which would be the difference between the two reserve requirements is that fiscal year 19, uh, pursuant to the audited, uh, books that we just, uh, received not too long ago, actually indicated that, uh, we have a residual balance in cash that, uh, you know, is technically available for the fiscal year to start with. You'll see what we have in mind with respect to those dollars and how that can play into, um, preserving burn rates here, but, uh, let's continue to evaluate the expenses we're anticipating. You can see here that, uh, that, uh, from a revenue standpoint, rather, we are anticipating a basic operating revenue stream of 39.9. Uh, if you look in the next entry for the non-operating revenues, uh, a, a lot of that 4.3 is that direct distribution money that we've talked a lot about over the last couple of years. 3.9 million of it, as a matter of fact, makes up that 4.3 that you're seeing. The other piece that goes into that figure is, uh, impact assistance money, which is not what we would normally want to do in terms of building operating revenues into, uh, the, the general fund in that the impact dollars are given to us to deal with impacts from building wind towers and so forth in our neighborhood, so to speak. We are suggesting building that into, uh, that revenue into our non-operating portfolio at least for the time being and potentially not having to do that as those dollars continue to come into the organization moving forward. So the total revenue from an operating, non-operating standpoint to operate the general fund, if you will, is 44.3 compared to the expenses that we're looking at here. Uh, we've got a non-op- we've got an operating expense portfolio of about, uh, 46.8. Uh, we're anticipating some capital expenses, albeit very, very small, uh, in the form of some computers needing to be replaced in the form of some other things that are, you know, smaller in nature that we would ordinarily build into the operating agenda to bring us to a total expenditure, um, agenda of 47.2. So certainly as you compare the two, you'll see that the imbalance that we've worked on so far is in the neighborhood of 2.9. I should tell you that when we started this exercise back in, uh, the early year part of April, um, we were at an imbalance of, uh, just over $6 million. So given the activities that we are suggesting so far and the cuts that we made, you know, from the thousand dollar pieces and parts that we took out on the expense side to the larger expense strategies that you're going to see here in a minute, uh, we were able to reduce that, uh, that, uh, imbalance by a little more than a half. We've got a proposal that we think we will be able to reduce that even further, uh, by another half, if you will, but let's, before we go into that, look at some of these expenses a little more closely, uh, so you can see what we're proposing. We're proposing everything from, uh, eliminating the Platte River Volunteer Day for the first time in 13, 14 years to, um, reducing our contractual obligation with Spectra by about 20% as well. So that includes obviously a lot. To begin with, we, we have had the good fortune of some vacancies present themselves as opportunities in the form of just about a million bucks, just over a million bucks actually. And so we built that into what you see here, not funding some of those positions. Uh, a, a large portion of that, I should tell you, is found in the police department. Uh, we are suggesting the temporary defunding of about five officer positions in the department that we historically fund, even though we don't historically fill those positions. So what we're suggesting is that we, uh, like I said, temporarily defund that shoulder of five positions that we just have not been able to capture in a, um, a, a, a fully staffed department like we have been trying to do for a number of years now. I would tell you however, that if the department somehow got the bead on five officers that they would hire at that tail end of our, of our full complement of officers, it would be difficult for me, um, to come to you or to, to, to not come to you, I should say, and suggest that we shouldn't, uh, fill those positions. Um, so I am going to encourage the department to continue to pursue funding those positions, but I'm not going to bet on the come from an expense standpoint, those positions are going to be filled thereby, um, uh, taking away these, these operational revenues that we really need to, to focus in on. So from that standpoint, I, I can imagine you're going to be hearing from us again. Seen if R really hasn't seen a change in what it is that we would propose for fiscal year 21 because we are anticipating the rodeo from happening again in the, uh, the new summer, if you will. We did save what we would have for the most part by otherwise having a rodeo this year, uh, in terms of that, that subsidy. Health Department has given us, uh, a proposal for about 5% reduction in what they're proposing. We are working with, um, the Economic Development Joint Powers Board for a 20% reduction on their side. We're still trying to work through that, but that's what that number would look like. Um, the impact assistance dollars that you're seeing, that we talked about just a second ago, does come in the form of that $367,000. We are also working with Spectra to reduce our contractual obligation from the typical $994,000 to, uh, just about $870,000, which technically does represent a 20% discount in what we normally pay them from the subsidy standpoint. But we have a couple of other smaller pieces and parts that we also fund to Spectra for the operation of the event center that have not been impacted and therefore brings that number back up to just under $870,000. Uh, a couple of other things that I wanted to bring to your attention, in addition to what you see here, that kind of makes up the, the expense strategy that we're pursuing. We are anticipating using interest income from perpetual care to not just deal with capital this year, but rather to deal with operational subsidy. So unlike times past, we are using perpetual care income, which would be interest income, to offset the size of the subsidies that we typically see going into, um, uh, or requiring transfers from the general fund. Just to give you a feel for what that looks like, that is $450,000 that, uh, will be plugged into that subsidy offset, which does reduce the subsidy to the, to the rec center to, uh, 700,000. It does reduce the, um, uh, let's see, Hoganons, um, subsidy to three, just over 300,000 and the ICE arena to just under 240,000. So while the, you know, those numbers still sound really big, the combined value of those subsidies actually are smaller by about $450,000. And so that's what makes up the, uh, the expense agenda, if you will, so far. Uh, what I'd like to do now is go ahead and shift to some other recommendations that we would have. We can evaluate how we would make up, let's go ahead and switch to the worksheet if we could. We would make up the, um, uh, the difference of the, uh, the general fund's imbalance with respect to needing some money from the reserves. And we've, uh, put together a worksheet that has a lot of moving parts here, but nonetheless, we think is really useful in terms of understanding various impacts and, uh, suggestions to the burn rates and to the imbalance that you see in the general fund so far. If you'll notice at the very top, under column I, the balance, the, excuse me, the imbalance that we're trying to work with here, which is at 2.9 million dollars in the general fund alone, which means that from a revenue standpoint and an expense standpoint, we don't have an answer for 2.9 million dollars. And we are suggesting at this point that we need to plug in reserves in order to, to fill that hole in the dam, so to speak. If you'll look just over to the right, under column P, you will see, uh, the headings for some of these other entries that we want to draw your attention to. With a 2.9 million dollar deficit in the general fund, that would be an annual burn rate of just under 18%, as you can see there in column Q. That would be a daily burn rate of, uh, right at $8,000 a day. And in that scenario, we would burn up all of that unassigned cash that was in the neighborhood of a million, uh, and, and change by the end of the calendar year. You can see there in November, actually probably before Thanksgiving. And the rest of the dollars, the whole 15.5 million that we would set aside by the year 2026, which would be just before the fiscal year 2027 would need to start. As we change some of these recommendations and put them into play or not put them into play and so on, you will notice the dynamics of the differences that we're dealing with and the burn rates and so forth being demonstrated in these charts below here. If we could scroll down and look into that for a second. Right now you'll see these line graphs, uh, sort of, uh, demonstrated with each other, uh, the red being the expense line in the general fund and the blue line being the operational revenue in the general fund. The delta between those two lines is that 2.9 million dollars throughout the full year. So if we did absolutely nothing and we didn't alter the recommendations that we have so far, that 2.9 million dollar difference would be ours to deal with moving forward. And it would assume, if you look further to the right, that that singular bar graph representing the reserves would, uh, would not go up or down. But rather at a, at the burn rate we're proposing at this point in time, which is again, just under 18%, you can see just kind of graphically what that does to the, uh, to the reserves over time. If we could move up a little bit again, Evan, to the top so we can see some more numbers, you will notice that all of these numbers and the imbalances and so forth, all assume that we don't lose anything from direct distribution from now on, for the rest of, you know, for the fiscal year anyway, that we were spot on as it relates to what we predicted for sales taxes and that we don't lose anything from a franchise fee perspective. Now, that is critical to understand as well because certainly, as you might imagine, as people's incomes drop and, and their ability to pay bills and so forth drops, that franchise fee piece could drop as well. But what would really impact the franchise fee, uh, program by, by, you know, to the tune of about a million dollars is if we don't renew our, uh, franchise fee model in its current form with Rocky Mountain Power. And this would be the fiscal year to get that done if we do decide to do that. So for example, the million dollars that, uh, we gather, and it's really closer to $900,000, that we gather right now by virtue of the last two percentage points that we incorporated into the franchise back in, um, 18, that has a four-year window on it. And so that would set to expire the next fiscal year, which would be fiscal year 22. If we didn't deal with it in fiscal year 21 and renew it, we would lose that million dollars. And accordingly, we would see the drop in, in, uh, our imbalance, if you will, if we were to deal with this for, uh, this new norm, so to speak, in years forward. You can see the imbalance in the general fund. If everything else remained the same in the general fund, to grow to 3.8 million and the burn rate would jump past a fifth and go into close, real close to 23%. And then of course you can see what that does in terms of the life that our re- reserve dollars would then take on. Our, uh, undesignated cash portion would burn out by Halloween and our committed portion that 15.5 would burn out, um, in, uh, November of '24. And that's just with one impact of us doing, you know, neglecting to do this issue or deal with this issue in fiscal year 21, that singular impact would create these, these concerns for us moving forward. Again, assuming everything else stayed the same. everything else stayed the same. Now, I'd like to talk about these characteristics a little further, but first, I want to talk to you about what we're proposing for additional cost-saving measures in the in the organization. So if we could reset that number there, Evan. You can see that we're back to dealing with the $2.9 million and a 17.48% burn rate annually. We are proposing step freezes, and for the general fund, that means $445,000 in savings. So if we click that on. We are also anticipating a furlough program as well, and we would need this furlough program to be in effect and to take its effect in this calendar year. So that would mean between July 1 and December 31, the effects of this furlough would need to happen. And if we could switch to that model real quick so we can show the council what it is that we're actually proposing, this is what the furlough model would look like that would net that type of savings. And I would tell you that that would mean we couldn't have over time to backfill these these deficits to the work week. We we certainly couldn't have, you know, unemployment as a part of this because that would erode what it is that we would expect to gain as a part of these these savings programs. But you can see here how that would impact individuals with respect to the salaries that they earn. The design is, with regard to this proposal, that those who earn more would have to give more days and it would, of course, decline to those that earn the least would give the least amount of days. Switching back to that that worksheet, if we could, Evan, you can see that if we turn that on, that would net us a savings of $658,000 in the general fund and it would reduce the combined value of these proposals to $1.8 million, which takes us down to 10.85% as a burn rate and, of course, extend the timeline by which these dollars could have some effect for the general fund. We're also proposing that we are not going to have much of a swimming season. I don't think the orders are going to come out in favor of public swimming for a while, maybe by the end of the summer, maybe not, I'm not totally sure. But public swimming is a lot different than athletic swimming that has been opened at this point in time, wherein one person can be in one lane exercising. Public swimming is quite a different model and is the reason I believe it hasn't been opened up at this point in time. There's two ways to look at this. Certainly, you see cost representations with regard to closing each pool for the summer and and that doesn't assume that the indoor pool would necessarily need to be closed for the summer. But with that, we we certainly would see more savings if we did. You can you can see there what that would net in terms of actual savings. Another way that council could look at this is by considering an expansion of the subsidy that 1% gives to the public swimming program. Right now, public swimming is granted by the the public, if you will, the voters of 1% to a subsidy of about $325,000. So in a in any given year where we have a full-blown swimming program in effect, we will spend $325,000 to subsidize the pool program and in in a lot of respects, kind of force a a fee subsidy in there so that the rate by which we charge people to come in and swim is is artificially low. Council could consider, if indeed we had the option of actually having a public swimming program this summer, of carrying out the rest of that subsidy through 1% to make swimming available, to whatever extent that might be. We assumed here that it could be the rest of the subsidy that would be necessary, which would be that $176,000 entry in the spreadsheet. If we did that, you want to hit that, Evan? You can see what it does to the to the to the burn rates and to the subsidy that we would need and and everything else. That drives it down to 1.6 in the general fund, that reduces the burn rate to below 10% and, of course, extends the time by which these dollars would be available to be consumed by the general fund. Now, again, we, yes, we are making a bunch of assumptions here. We're assuming a lot of things remain the same, but at least you have some frame of reference with regard to the benefit that looking at these cost savings proposals bring to the overall picture of the the general fund's situation. That sales tax deferral, we did reach out to the state and they did give us an extension of the timeframe by which we have to pay back that doggone sales tax money that we were overpaid back in '13, '14, '15, somewhere in there, because that, as you can see, is about $185,000 a year commitment to pay back. We have gotten the authority or the blessing, if you will, I should say, from the state to defer that payment. I didn't want to assume that you necessarily agreed with that, but if you did, giving us that extension and basically a grace period for the next fiscal year would, of course, apply more downward pressure on that subsidy requirement to the point that we're actually below $1.5 million for the fiscal year. And as you can see, that improves the burn rate and improves the timeframe by which these dollars are made available to us and and the reserves. And if we could switch down to the graph, you can see how dramatically the the graph has improved with respect to the delta between operating expenses and operating revenue. That delta now looks more like $1.4 million than it did the 2.9. And so with the proposals that we've suggested so far, we cut that that deficit position that we started out with from the general fund worksheet previously to two and a half. Now, without a doubt, we can cut this further. But I will tell you that the measures we would have to bring forward in order to make that gap close even further would be much more draconian than what you're seeing right now. And I didn't feel that we had that blessing, if you will, to be that harsh. Certainly, if council feels like we do need to be more harsh as it relates to eliminating that deficit, we've got ideas that could that could that could do that. But it will be at a direct impact to the services that we extend to the city. Right now, one of the things that you're going to see, unless you tell me otherwise, that I didn't mention in in my list, if you will, my laundry list of things, is you're going to see parks looking a lot less green with regard to the budget that we're proposing to you so far. We cut that number in half. And so the watering that you see in the parks over the next summer is going to be just enough to sustain the turf and the trees so that we don't lose either. But it it brings a lot of benefit to trying to bring dollars into the into the mix. We were very lucky to get federal funding into the mix as well in the form of a CATS subsidy, but we have not had any luck at all in terms of finding federal dollars that helps us backfill revenue that we will lose and are losing right now. So from the standpoint of of that potentially being good news for us, as we get through the summer, you will see things improve if we can, you know, deploy federal dollars into our operations, that that could help us. But I'm telling you, don't hold your breath because everything that we're seeing right now is is simply not giving us any reason to get excited about it outside of what FTA has done through cares and what that's brought forward to help our subsidy to CATS. That's that's been a really good news piece of what you see here, but we've already captured it, unfortunately. It doesn't give us more benefit than what you're seeing right now. So if we could shift back to the top here and look at our numbers again, I want you to see what happens with respect to all the work that you potentially will approve to bring that subsidy to 1.4 million and how that can be impacted if we were wrong on the sales tax projections. Let's just say 20% is not enough, but indeed we need 30, 30% discount to plan for. Look and see what happens here. We're right back up just with a 10% shift to that $2.9 million right away. And that's, again, assuming everything else remains the same. That assumes that you're comfortable with the cost proposals that we've proposed so far. We're right back to that $2.9 million imbalance with only a 10% miscalculation of where we thought sales taxes would come in at. That's why sales taxes really are critical for us to understand and try to project and predict appropriately. If indeed we we lose the franchise fees on top of that over the next fiscal year, our our problems will grow to, you know, basically another million almost, 3.8 million, which, again, brings us to nearly a fourth of an imbalance in the general fund as it relates to where our reserves would be needed to to plug the holes. Let's go ahead and restore those two, if we could. Let's assume that we're not off on the sales tax perspective, we're not off on the franchise fee perspective, and we can get franchise fees moving forward. If we lose direct distribution as a part of the state's strategies to save themselves some money, you can see what dramatic impact that will have with regard to our situation. Direct distribution, if it's if it's whittled to some degree, let's say we get 90% over the next fiscal year, we're quickly moving in the direction of seeing our imbalance grow as well. We we've lost a lot of the benefit with some of the proposals that we've proposed so far and things start to get worse for us in terms of depending on reserves. If that grows and we'll say we lose 50% of our direct distribution over the next fiscal year, that imbalance in what we'd hoped to plug into our operational revenue for the general fund pushes us into a reserve requirement of 3.4, almost 3.5 million, and and then we're pushing a fifth more of a need, I should say, out of the general fund, out of the reserve, excuse me. And you can see what that does to our timeframes and everything else. Hopefully, the state will not view that as an element of their strategy portfolio. Or if they do, they'll give us some federal funds that would at least tide us over for the next year and keep our losses to a minimum as much as possible. I honestly don't know what to expect, but I certainly did hear a lot of conversation in the budget session this past year of of that being a likely target should the state need to move forward with some cost-cutting measures of their own. And that was before we really realized what would happen just a few weeks later and and our economy locally shut down and for this much of the state shut down as well. So if we could move that back to 100%, please. You 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 have a picture of what it is that we're proposing. The picture that you see in your book, however, would be more along the lines of the worksheet where the $2.9 million is the deficit that we are forced to reconcile right now. I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, where we want to go from here as it relates to evaluating some of these choices, but without a doubt, I would like to see the reserve preserved as long as possible in the face of the circumstance that we may be wrong from a sales tax perspective. We may see a resurgence in the virus coming forward in the fall or winter, which would have direct economic impacts to us as well and would probably affect our sales tax number as well. I don't think it wise to have a reserves plug the whole in a greater capacity than what we're seeing right now, mostly because there's so much that's unknown for the general fund and the sales tax dollars that, as well as the other operational dollars, that we just don't have a feel for yet.
Okay.
Certainly be happy to take any questions, Mr. Mayor.
I actually have a few questions for you. So when we're looking at looking at the pools, Marion Criner, Washington, Paradise Valley, and Mike Seager, are all of those amounts combined added into that aquatics full subsidy? Or are those amounts that haven't been taken out on this? So I mean, that's the amount that we would save if they wouldn't be opened up, but would? Is that part of that full subsidy?
That would be, Mr. Mayor, a part of that full subsidy. That's correct, yeah. That would assume if we did nothing with that full subsidy, that we'd keep the indoor pool open as well. So in other words, we close the outdoors pools, we keep the indoor pool open and incur the cost of that pool, albeit that pool is generally a little easier to to manage than than the outdoor pools.
So essentially, I was doing the math on it, it was like 107,000 we saved by not opening the outdoor pools.
That's right.
Okay. All right. And then when we talked about employee furloughs and you had the you had the graphic that showed by salary and then the amount of dates that they would be, yep, so the number of days, that's the number of days between July 1 and December 31 that people with, is that across the board for everybody that they would be furloughed for that many days?
Correct.
Per per salary range, okay. Okay. And then the other question that I had when we were talking about officer positions for the PD, first of all, how many, I know we've always been generally about 10 positions that haven't been filled. Do we know where we're at now as far as positions that haven't been filled? And then when you talk about not funding five of those positions, essentially we're eliminating them but not eliminating them, correct? So we just won't fund those, but they're not going to go anywhere, correct?
That's exactly right. And, Mr. Mayor, that's the case with a number of positions, particularly in the general fund. There are positions that we have, what I call temporarily defunded, but not shed completely. In in my opinion, if you shed them, they no longer exist, their DNA is gone, and and the authorization is is, you know, abandoned, if you will. In this scenario, what we're suggesting for those positions as well as several others in the general fund, we're just simply not funding them for the time being. But they're still there, they're still authorized, and we're not going to have to come back to you, at least if council sees fit, to say, hey, we'd like to expand our force by five slots or whatever the case may be.
Yep. So I guess that's kind of what I was getting at, is I don't want us to see, I don't want to go to a point that we take five away and then we have to go through a process to add five back on later on.
Exactly.
We're just not funding it. So then the second part of that question would be, and I think you answered it, but throughout the remainder of the organization, do we have positions in different areas that we could do the exact same thing with, not fund them at this point in time, not not shed them, but not fund them to help us make up some more of these costs?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the the million dollars that we attributed to that program, if you will, that savings program, does just exactly what you described. It considers all the positions that are open right now, vacant, haven't been filled, and we are proposing they don't get filled for at least the next year. So that includes PD, it includes our office. So that includes PD, it includes our office, it includes HR, it includes Parks and Rec. For the general fund, that may be all the departments. I have them listed in the message more clearly, but community development's another one. Your understanding of it is exactly right. They are temporarily defunded. We're not, we don't have any other vacancies that we can look at right now without going through layoffs. If we do get a vacancy that comes up because someone retires or they find a job elsewhere, whatever, in my opinion, that vacancy would shift into this program as well.
Okay. Do any other council members have questions at this time or comments? Councilman Kathy.
Yes. I wanted to clarify what I thought I just heard. And maybe it was my misunderstanding, the furlough days are not for the entire year. They would just be between now and the end of the year. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kathy, that's correct. We would need to do that before the end of the fiscal year so that for the second half of the fiscal year, if we needed to duplicate the same exact thing because we were off on our projections and so forth, we would have that in our pocket to deploy for the second half of the fiscal year.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to clarify that. That's great. How much, one other question that I had too, along with this, looking at what's on the board right now is I noticed that Mike Cedar is only 808,000 where several of the others are in the tens of thousands. Has there been any thought to maybe only keeping one, maybe two outside pools open versus closing all of them? Or are you still thinking that social distancing may wipe out the use of any of those?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kathy, I think you're hitting on a lot of the criteria, if you will, that brought us to this recommendation. We don't know how much of the swimming summer we're going to have for outdoors, if any. And that would apply to the indoors as well. We just don't know if public swimming is going to be a feature of our summer based on the protocols. The further and further we get into the summer, the more and more challenging it becomes to staff all the pools because kids are hard to find the later you get in the summer. And so, again, that's really another reason that we're coming to this. It's sort of a natural element of consideration with respect to services that need to be impacted this coming summer. Indeed, Mike Cedar is one of those that does have some revenue that offsets a lot of his expenses because it's a pretty popular pool. And it's been made popular frankly because council decided a year, a year or two ago to not charge any fees to get into that pool. Ironically, it has brought a lot of concession revenue to the mix. Because I guess the money they saved on not having to pay to get in the doors, they spent on candy bars and pretzels and stuff like that. So that's why you see that number being so much disparate in its difference compared to the rest of the outdoor facilities.
As a follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Good.
Should we go ahead and consider a plan to maybe so you've got one kind of east and one west, consider that if social distancing allows us to open pools, we should only maybe open Mike Cedar and PV and leave Marion Kriener and Washington Park closed and see where that puts us budget-wise and then we take those two out as things progress?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kathy, if I could correct myself here for just a second. Marion Kriener is the pool that was the fee, that had the fees waived on it, not Mike Cedar. I apologize. The rest of my answer stands to remain factual in that the revenue we take in at Mike Cedar does offset a lot of the expenses that we have unique to Mike Cedar. But Marion Kriener, to be totally clear, is the only pool that you've waived the fees for. I apologize for that misstatement on my part.
Not a problem. That's fine. But I guess, you know, and I hate to close, the only thing that we have in North Casper, but if we close the pool there, would the splash pad still be operational? I don't recall how it's all laid out.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I would suggest that the splash pad would remain operational if indeed we open Marion Kriener in the summer, whenever that might be.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back talking a little bit about the furloughs, just so, just so our public is aware of what a furlough is. My definition of a furlough is you're not going to be paid your wages, but you will remain within the benefit package in terms of insurance. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hopkins, that is correct. And I would also say that I would advocate for those benefits to be accumulated. So in other words, if I'm on furlough for a day, I would like to make it so that my vacation time would continue to accrue. My sick time would continue to accrue for that day that I wouldn't be paid if I'm explaining myself.
Thank you.
Clearly.
Mr. Manager, I guess one other question. And the, so the amounts that we're showing saving on each of those pools, is that taking into consideration also the employees it would take, their wages it would take to operate those pools?
Mr. Mayor, that is primarily what makes up those costs, the amount of part-timers that we wouldn't need to hire in order to staff those pools, right? The net, if you will.
Are there any other questions from council or comments? And they're all dark screens, so.
We still have them. All right. Moving forward then, if we could, from the general fund into the enterprises, much of what you see in the enterprise funds is not going to be a whole lot different than what we talked about back in November and in January. The sewer fund is a good example of that. The projection that we cast, if you will, back in November is holding true so far. Certainly, we're not too much into the new sort of rate period, if you will, and that those rates went into effect on January 1. But we are seeing things trend as to where we thought they would be. And namely, if you'll look at that very bottom line here, we do believe that that $879,000 would be what we contribute back to the fund, the enterprise, that is over and above the reserve requirement to operate the fund. And as you can see up above, toward the top of the column there, that 2.1 is what the reserve requirement is for this, for this fund. We do anticipate losing a little money, but as you can see on the graph here, the pro forma graph, if you will, we knew that was going to happen because at this point in time, the space between the ideal operating condition and the actual behavior of the operation in this fund happens to be quite a bit. And council made the decision to allow some of that surplus, if you will, to absorb the need for a rate increase. The challenge that we face with the sewer fund, however, is that indeed we have a lot of capital that the sewer fund needs to oversee and manage. And that's why it was initially very, very important to have that balance over and above the reserves so that we could afford some capital. The infusion of sales one cent dollars, I should say, into this has helped relieve some of the pressure on the rate model as well. Moving forward to the water fund, if we could, again, not a whole lot different at this moment in time than what we projected back in November and January. We do anticipate that just over $600,000 will be contributed back to the fund over and above what is required for the reserves. And again, as we look at the actual curve, the behavior of the fund over the next year, very much in line with what we talked about, what we planned for. There's quite a bit of space between the ideal operating condition and where the blue line is actually anticipated to travel, if you will, in this fund. Losing some of those dollars that you saw previously is really just a measure of the absorption by which the fund would perform versus trying to get it all back in rates, given its fairly ideal condition right now. Refuge, however, tells a little bit of a different story. We projected quite a bit of a difference than what you see now. That negative cash impact at towards the bottom was not what we anticipated back in November and in January. And that's mostly because the activity that we're seeing right now, we believe would not sustain what we thought would happen, particularly if you look at what we originally proposed to you by way of the pro forma. You can see here that the blue line actually travels quite well over fiscal year 21 towards the ideal operating condition for this fund. However, if you look at what it is that we project now, now that we've gotten a little actual data under our belts, the story is quite different. That purple line suggests where the fund goes if we do nothing to try to correct our course moving into the new fiscal year and the latter half of the first rate year. We are proposing that we alter our capital spend to the degree that you see in the yellow dotted line so that we can correct our course to some degree over the next fiscal year and bring our performance of this fund into more alignment where, with where we thought the refuse fund was going to perform originally. Now, the good news is if things should work out as we see them here, we should not have to depart from our rate schedule that we proposed to you back in November and January. In that, council might see the disparity between the ideal that we tried to illustrate back in November and what we see happening with the changes we're proposing as being not too overwhelming, even though a portion of that yellow line still does dip into the reserves in order to function. Council may decide that that's not appropriate either. And you may want to look at either a rate increase or further curtailment of expenses in order to bring that yellow line closer to the blue line and above any foray into the reserves that this, that this yellow line would indicate so far. We certainly do not propose that nothing be done to correct the behavior of the purple line, if you will. And rather, we'd like to see our expenses curtailed in such a way that that can be approved and maybe even corrected by the time we get through this full rate year. Therefore, we are not proposing any rate changes at this point in time. We think we can deal with this from an expense side. In other words, curtail a lot of the expenses that we hope to do in this fund to bring the correction that we think would be more appropriate. Now, one of the things that council is going to need to talk about, and we set aside some time on Wednesday to delve into this a little further, is with respect to recycling. This fund is primarily where you would see a recycling impact occur. Should you want to take on a rate increase or should you decide to not take on a rate increase, but continue with the program, this fund will be likely reacting in an adverse condition again if we decide to do nothing. So Wednesday night, we're going to bring forward a recommendation, the majority of which is driven by a lot of the feedback we've gotten from the public. And we think that to a large degree, you won't see a lot of variation with respect to the the new trend line that we would encourage you to adopt in the form of that yellow dash line, even if we bring on recycling and the rate increase that it would entail.
Carter, that was, that was going to be my question. The, so we have talked about a potential increase, a rate increase for recycling itself. How would that impact this? I mean, would it get us to where we need to be or do we need to look at more of an increase than just what we had discussed to keep recycling in the community?
The, Mr. Mayor, it's a great question. The option that we think is going to surface with the public and again, be a lot of the driver for what we would recommend to you would include a $1.70 a month for our residential customers in order to maintain recycling exactly as we have it now and bring on the MRF, which would help us to get to that zero level of tolerance for contamination. So I am predicting, having not plugged it into the model that you see right here, that that incursion of a, of a rate increase for recycling will dramatically impact that yellow dash line. It probably won't improve it, but I don't think it's going to push it downward much either, at least to the extent that you should be concerned. But we'll prepare that for you for Wednesday night. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Moving on to the bail fill. Believe it or not, the bail fill is not being impacted yet with respect to the, to the downturn of the economy. We have seen, and if any of you have been out there, you'll know what I'm talking about. We have seen a continual stream of people coming to the landfill. And, and just like me, I've been out there several times since the downturn has occurred. A lot of people are taking advantage of the time to get projects done at home, to clean up things, and they're bringing it all to the bail fill. Accordingly, the bail fill fund is, again, at this moment in time, not seeing, you know, a negative impact based on the downturn economically. As a matter of fact, as you can see here, we anticipate $316,000 being turned back into the cash balances of this, of this fund, which are over and above what is required for the reserves of this fund, which is consistent with what we proposed to you back in November as well. We do anticipate a huge drop, as you can see here, but that is exactly in line with what we talked about as it relates to bringing a new cell online starting in fiscal year 22. That is a very, very expensive project, an expense that we have planned for and thought about for a long time. And while it will hit the fund pretty hard, we do believe that because we have planned for it and set dollars aside, that the rebound will be relatively quick. And fortunately, the conditions right now have not derailed that prospectus so far. That really is the review of the enterprises that we, again, talked in great detail about prior to now. But certainly, if there are other questions about the enterprises, Mr. Mayor, that your council would have, we'd be happy to take them.
Anybody have any questions?
Okay. Moving into sort of the concluding portions of our budget, I wanted to deal with a couple questions that inevitably we have gotten and we do get from citizens and so forth. A lot of the misconception is that there's hundreds of millions of dollars in savings and reserves that allow us to weather whatever extent of downturn we may have. And what I would tell you is if indeed that is to be believed, you really have to throw in that the, that the total cash inventory, if you will, of the organization is closer to 80 million and is really spread over all the utilities, all the other funds that have been set aside by been set aside by resolution or other policy caveat. The reality is, those dollars that are set aside for the general fund are in the neighborhood we're anticipating to be about 15 and a half million dollars. And we do think that if you adopt the proposals we're forwarding to you right now, we should be able to nurse those reserves along for some time in the event that we don't have other cataclysmic failures in our assumptions for the budget. But again, utility funds are not permitted by statute or the constitution in a lot of ways to deal with imbalances that we have in the general fund, except for very, very specific and defined means that usually requires some level of payback for projects, not to pay for people, if you will. Myth number two, again, another question that we typically get, why are you worried? You know, the economy is going to come back. That's what reserves are for, to help you weather those kinds of things and whatnot. And the fact is, I do believe that the economy is going to come back. I do believe that oil is going to come back. And I absolutely believe that the virus will die, and we will, or we'll find a cure, or something like that. I don't think we're going to have those two issues on our plates forever, but what I do know is that recovery is always slower than the downturn. It always comes back slower than what it takes to actually lose the bottom. I found a graph here recently that kind of demonstrates that, that I wanted to bring out. This is production data that the state has on hand since, I think, about the '30s. And if I were to have put this graph together, I would have included a couple of the features that would have helped, namely, a timeline. But this covers the '30s until now, basically, projected until now. And the darkened portion of this representation indicates actuals here in the Trona County from an oil production standpoint. The silhouette in the background tries to mimic what happened statewide. As you can see, in the early times, the county kind of bore the burden of producing the majority of the state's output, and then from then on out, particularly past our peak in the late '60s, the state has carried that lion's share. You will notice that with every peak and downturn, there is another peak. But since the '60s, it's been a smaller peak, unfortunately. Since the '80s, it's been an even smaller peak therein. We can see where we kind of hit a new high in '15, but again, it doesn't really rival what we experienced in later years. The two graphic representations of the dotted lines there represents the gray, at least on the side of where we think the county is going to be from now on, and sort of a combined trend line right above that. But if history is to be our teacher with regard to what we think is going to happen, we do think it's going to come back, but it will likely be over a period of years and unfortunately, not at the same peaks that we have seen historically. And I would also kind of direct your attention to that original slide that we talked about earlier, albeit in different colors here. When you look at '14, which is kind of our most recent in memory timeframe, that kind of is probably more consistent with that '15 peak on the previous slide, we've got a long way to go before we see those good days again. And I would bet you, if we were to compare May's, between May of '20 and May of '14, we will not see a May as the previous chart just described that comes close to what we saw back in '14. So again, another reason, I'm trying to be very conservative with reserves, I don't think energy is going to come back to buoy us up as it has in the past, although I do think it will eventually, just not in the next year or two. So I do think we have to be conservative. I just do. And this is part of the reason why. Moving into the third budget, I've gotten this question a couple of times from citizens and actually even from employees. There really are millions of dollars for cities to use. The trick is that since we're not a city of 500,000 people, which we had the opportunity to express directly to our federal delegation very specifically as to our displeasure of that cutoff, we don't have backfill opportunities that we have found yet, with the exception of what we found through FTA and the dollars that they were able to get through CARES. And again, we did plug those into the very early expense portfolio, revenue portfolio that you saw at the beginning of our presentation. This is not to say that we are giving up the ghost and we're not pursuing federal dollars, and we're not talking to our legislators, and we're not talking to folks who have some information for us that we are trying to deploy. But up until this very point in time, we haven't found a panacea through the federal dollars, and therefore, outside of the CAC dollars that we talked about, we have not built any federal dollars that would be a rescue for us into the budget that you have in front of you. I would like to, and I hope to, as we move forward, but for right now, we can't make that assumption at all. And so therefore, we just don't have that wind in our sails, as it were. Is that the last myth? Oh, okay. This goes back to my very opening comments. Typically, when we pass a budget, we get to stitch it up, and we really don't have to worry about it, except on an amendment basis. This year, I'm predicting, will not be the same. I think we're going to have to have a budget session like this probably before year's end. I hope I'm wrong. I hope it's not true, and I hope the economy rebounds in such a way that we just deal with amendments. But any of the practical guidance that I've seen or read or discussed would suggest that we are probably going to have to have a budget discussion again, well beyond the normal amendment scenario. And so from that standpoint, if council is comfortable viewing our future, our near-term future, through the lens of we're probably going to have to come back and talk, then I think we're going to be okay, because we're going to project losses for you, we're going to talk about other options as we get closer to that scenario, so you're not going to be surprised. And I guess that's the reason I want to build this into you right now, because to a larger extent, I hope our citizenry hears too, that from the standpoint of trying to pass a budget that is, you know, as least dependent on reserves as possible, we are going to have to talk again. And that's really the table I'm trying to set for you and your constituencies. So with that in mind, let's talk about what those things are that we got to keep our eye on. Again, I really suggest we need to have that conversation about the franchise. And that's not a comfortable conversation, but the outcome with respect to losing that revenue moving forward could be really, really challenging. We will talk about recycling here coming up on Wednesday, but I'd also like to cover the comp and class study, the findings of which we have discussed to some degree. We need to talk to you in a little more detail about the implementation, and we hope to be able to do that Wednesday night as well. We'll bring you some dollar figures, we'll bring you some ideas. But if I could, put that off till Wednesday, I'd sure appreciate that. If there are questions about the capital plan, we need to deal with that too, but I'm really hoping that council will stick to our guns, as it were, with respect to that significantly reduced capital agenda that we gave you some insight to last Tuesday night. We do have some lingering questions that we need to answer for you that won't necessarily take up a lot of time on Wednesday, but if indeed we need to talk about this further, we're prepared to do so. I would really suggest that we have our legislators help us keep an eye on direct distribution. That would be a cataclysmic issue to deal with if we lose direct distribution. And I'm not trying to be dramatic, I'm trying to be realistic, because that means we would have to come up with another $4 million, which means we would be back up to about $7 million. Well, not quite, seven. Well, yeah, seven, if we don't take on the cost-cutting alternatives that we offered you in that worksheet, that we'd have to exact out of the general fund operations. That would be a horrible scenario for us. And I hope that if any legislators are listening, I would strongly advocate to all of you that we keep our eye on that and not let that happen if at all possible, if at all possible, without some sort of replacement scenario. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure that I have anything else to draw your attention to that your questions wouldn't help direct me for.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really would like to compliment our city manager and staff for putting this program together. This is about as good as it gets under the conditions we have. I understand we're going to have to bite the bullet on some issues, but I just wanted you folks to know that I'm really proud to be serving on council with people that can put this kind of a program together. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo those comments, Carter, and all of the managers who are on this call. It amazes me that someone can go through a budget like this in everyday terms and make it comprehensible to those of us who haven't lived in that world, so well done. I'm going to ask a question that I've often asked during these proposed budget sessions, and maybe the answer is no, but were there moments where you were making decisions that were really kind of a difficult call, where you could have gone one way, you could have gone another way, but you decided that you would go with Plan A versus Plan B, but you could have gone the other way? Where did you find yourself making difficult decisions that could have gone in the other direction if there were any of those moments?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Powell, I appreciate that question. Without a doubt, it is with respect to those impacts that these proposals have on services that will impact our citizens, and certainly, as those services impact our employees. I would have, you know, preferred to have some alternatives that would have kept services whole and that would have kept employees whole, but the only way that that could have been done would have been to take a bigger chunk and bite out of the reserves, which would take us down a much more tenuous path. And so for me, that question is, you know, something that is easy for me, because I can tell you, I did reflect on that a bunch.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, as a follow-up, could you be more specific and talk about which services, service service cutbacks were the more difficult decisions to make?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, if I may, Councilman Powell, you know, when you talk about pools, that's an easy one. It's a very, very popular program. It doesn't come without expenses, and in our environmental conditions right now, it's I think we have an answer, but it would mean more one cent dollars funneled to it, and I think that's, you know, in terms of what we have facing us, that may be not too hard of an answer. I don't know. The other side of it is, I'm one that really enjoys parks and trails, and I know a lot of our community does. Those are going to be impacted, not only from the standpoint of the watering being tough and whatnot, but also from the standpoint of the facilities just not being as enjoyable as normal. And, you know, so those are some of the service kinds of things that I would point to as it relates to projects. I was really excited, and I think the public would have been excited to see a lot of the improvements that were on the agenda with regard to our unabridged proposal that we made to the council. But the reality is, I just can't see our way through taking on an agenda like that when there's so many unknowns, and we have such an opportunity to reverse our way of thinking as it relates to planning for capital from now on. But that hits services that the citizens enjoy quite directly, in the form of streets that don't get resurfaced, and so on and so on. I know another thing that will be a conversation that's difficult to endure, and that'll be that franchise fee conversation. It would be wonderful to not have to rely upon that as an operating revenue moving forward, and actually moving forward beyond fiscal year 21, but unfortunately, that's a year that we've got to deal with that. And from a, you know, a taxation discussion, which is a little bit disingenuous, because this isn't a tax, it brings with it a lot of challenge. And I felt like it'd be important to do with that right from the beginning in a very upfront way to let you know that that's got to be on our horizon to talk about. And that is something citizens will not like and be impactful to the citizenry. Does that help, Councilman Powell?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
I bet.
Mr. Manager, I have a question. So off of, we've heard a lot lately from citizens that are starting to get their assessments for their properties. And there's substantial increases that have taken place on a lot of properties, and I know that, again, a lot of people are upset about that and they're, I guess, contesting them would be the best way of saying that. But what kind of sales tax do we normally see, or what do we see to the city itself off of that? And do we have any idea with the increase that's taken place, seems like across the board, how will that, will that help us with those extra taxes?
Mr. Mayor, that's a very interesting question. I've heard those comments as well. And, you know, fortunately, in at least this one circumstance, that's not a decision that we control, right? And so the difference, however, in terms of the percentage that it provides our general fund is pretty darn small. And that's because, as a city here in Wyoming, we get a very minority position, if you will, in the property tax dollars and its relation to our overall revenue portfolio. But to answer your question very specifically, let me put Tom or Evan on the spot, and if we can't get you that right now, we'd be happy to take that on as homework for next week, or next meeting.
Okay. And I ask that just simply because of the fact that, you know, obviously, there'd be an impact, but I'm just curious as to how large of an impact that is. And again, we're not the ones to make that decision for that increase itself. So I think more so for those that are watching, you know, what that really means to the city itself.
Mr. Mayor, Council, currently, we have budgeted about $4.4 million in property tax revenue, which is our part of the eight mills. And I guess I'm not sure as far as the impact, and I have to ask Evan, I guess, is that from the assessors? Did we get the final numbers from the assessor's office? Okay, so that is based on what the assessor indicated to us that they'd be charging now. So that should be a pretty accurate number that we have. As far as people appealing their assessments, how that may play out, I guess, I don't know. I don't see that being a significant impact to the revenue, so I think what we have budgeted is a pretty solid number.
And, Mr. Mayor, it probably, for all intents and purposes, will look relatively flat as far as year-over-year comparisons to what we got last year and what we're getting this year. And I think that's the heart of what you're asking. What's it going to look like in terms of the difference?
Yeah, I think the question I'm asking is, where we were at as far as what we would receive for taxes, and now the increase that's taken place across the board, what kind of a difference is that?
Why don't we take that on as a homework assignment, Mr. Mayor, and bring it back if we could?
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Does any other council members have any questions or comments? Does any other council members have any questions or comments? Councilman Bates.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Question I have is, I'm not sure if you look at other cities' budgets, but if you do, how do our budget compare to theirs through the tough time? And then a second question is, what are we, if we're doing better, what are we doing different that's given us the advantage?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bates, that is a very interesting question. I, let me try to answer it, and if I don't totally, please shoot another question at me and I'll see if I can get closer to what you might be, the information you're looking for. I have had the opportunity to visit with a number of city managers around the state, and we've all kind of not only commiserated with each other, but shared ideas with each other and talked to each other about things that they're trying and things that they're looking at and in some cases, some of the uniqueness that each of the cities are facing and managing. One of the unique aspects of what we do here in Casper is with respect to the support of so many different recreational facilities and leisure-type services. Outside of Gillette with the complex, you know, we probably have the largest subsidy requirement for a facility in the form of the event center here in Casper. We do not, I mean, there are no other cities that I'm aware of, and I could be wrong, but no other cities that I'm aware of that have a ski area like we do. And so the draw that those types of obligations have on our general fund is nearly exclusively unique for folks here in Wyoming. On the other hand, unlike the city of Riverton, we don't have an airport that we have to operate. We don't have a municipal airport. And so, you know, they enjoy that distinction there in the center of the state. I would tell you that aside from the variety of differences that makes our budget challenging, albeit maybe not more challenging than the other communities around the state, the discount that we have proposed for, you know, sales taxes in particular, is very much in line with what the rest of the cities and towns are planning for, with a few exceptions. I think Douglas is actually preparing for a higher discount than we are. I think there's maybe one or two other communities, if my memory serves me correctly, that would suggest not as drastic a discount as we are. But by and far, where we're at is pretty much where everybody else is at as well. And Councilman, that's my best attempt at my run at your question. Did I miss something that I could help with on that one?
No, I appreciate it. I was just kind of wondering that right there. You answered it of where we are at compared to the other cities. I know everybody's budget is going to be a bit different, but just how Casper's handling or stacking up with all the rest of the cities and I guess, kind of, not to put you on the spot or brag about our city, but if we're doing a little bit better and serving our community through this tough time a little bit better than maybe some of the other ones because they're struggling and different with their budgets. Because as Hawkins said, Councilman Hawkins said, just how fantastic all you guys are and everything that you guys are doing to keep us going and doing what you guys can to make us keep going through this. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from council members or comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, what I would invite the council to do is consider the number of proposals that we put before you. And I realize it's a lot, and that's why we try to come to you early, because indeed, the 30 days that we have from here until the time that we need to pass the budget will probably generate some other questions and other insights and ideas even, any of that. So as you read through the budget message, which, you know, is the document, the memo basically, that you received today, and you consider the book we sent you over the weekend and the presentation that we can also equip you with, we are open to any number of discussions we need to have from here on out. I would suggest that that second business meeting in June is kind of our drop-dead date, as it were, with regard to passing a budget. There's some statutory obligations there that we simply can't get around in a lot of ways. And so please, if there are things we can do to work through this more thoroughly or further and, you know, even beyond Wednesday night, of course, we should, you should know that we're open to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other questions or comments from council? Okay, well, I guess we'll just make sure that everybody gets through all this material by Wednesday and bring any other comments or questions they have then, or suggestions.
Fair enough.
And we should be good. Vice Mayor Lutz, did you have something?
No, everything looks good to me. I mean, obviously, we all need to review those options and get some answers back, but it all looks good.
Good. Is that, do you have anything else for tonight?
I think I'm good, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thanks for all your time, everybody.
Okay. Well, thanks, everybody, and that'll be it for this evening. Thanks to all the city employees that I see online that didn't get to talk to us, but we appreciate you being here and all the work you've done. So, and so tomorrow night, our council meeting. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Goodbye. Goodbye.
Thanks, guys. Thank you for being here and helping us do it. Appreciate it. Can you do the next two nights or?
Yeah.
Okay. Now where he can go to his birthday party.
What's that?
Now he can go to his birthday party.
She turned 18.
The meeting ended, I don't know if to...
Just like now, I would like to tell Susie she needs to, oh, she needs to start being act like an adult.
Now you're 18, right? There you go. You're an adult now, act like one.
Like now, you're an adult. I need to go do your own stuff.
Right.